Good evening, everybody. Our August 8th, 2022 meeting is now called to order. Just like to remind everybody, please silence your cell phones before we get started with the meeting. We will have invocation and then pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Nielsen on today. Can we rise for both prayer and the pledge? Let us pray together. God, we thank you for another day that you've given us to breathe, to live, to enjoy our loved ones, to serve this city. God, we understand that our children throughout the city have started school. We're asking for your presence, your guidance, your protection. As not only do they matter to us in the present, we understand that there is so much of our future. And we thank you, God, that this will be a great year for them, administrators and teachers alike. Oh, God, we thank you for this opportunity to serve this great city. Pray that we will conduct the business of this historic town in a way that makes you proud, makes our residents proud as well. We thank you for keeping us and guiding us now. It's in your son Jesus' name we ask these blessings. Amen. Councilman Nielsen.
Please join me in our exciting pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Okay. We are now to the reading and approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was July 25th, 2022.
May I make a motion that we approve the minutes of July 22?
I second.
July 25th, 2022.
Do we hear the second?
I second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes as they have been recorded. Any comments or questions, counsel, about that? Any public comments about this particular motion? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Our special, excuse me, our special recognition tonight is a young man who is a St. Mary's Tiger by the name of Mason McCart. Last year about this time, we had a young lady with us, Anna Kate Jackson. And I think I shared with everybody that when I was an educator, I worked very closely with the Beta Club organization just on the junior high level. And it is, you know, much populated, a lot of children participate in Beta Club, really a lot of great things going on. It's an organization, you know, I certainly want my kids to be a part of. It's very unusual for, yeah, it's very difficult, let me say, for a person to become president, national president of the Beta Club organization, considering the amount of students and not just the amount, but the ambition of the students who are part of this prestigious organization. Not only did Natchitoches, in particular St. Mary's, experience national Beta Club president last year, but this year as well. And this is something I think that should make all of us proud of Mr. Mason McCart for this great accomplishment. And we have Mason here with us today. I've asked him to share with us some of his speech, and we're going to get him to come to the microphone. And certainly, counsel, if you've got any questions or comments, we will allow that. But we want to hear the speech that won it for President McCart. So, Mr. McCart, if you would come to the microphone, state your first and last name, please. This is what we do for, you know, public record sake, excuse me. But your state's your first and last name, and then you can get into your speech however you naturally do it.
I'm Mason McCart, and I don't actually have my campaign speech with me, just because it's just like, "Vote for me, I'm Mason."
Okay.
So I made it a little something earlier today. So I just want to say thank you all so, 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 so much for allowing me the privilege to be here before you all today. This past month has been a whirlwind with Beta and all the other events in my life. But to stand in front of you all today and be recognized for such a great achievement is truly an honor. When I was younger, I was extremely introverted. I never had many friends, and I felt as though everything I did and say never truly had an impact on people. But now that I am older, I realize I could not have been more wrong. When I joined Beta, I never would have imagined this would be the outcome. And I never would have imagined that by beginning of my senior year, that I would have such a large platform to be able to spread love and compassion on a national level. But as I go forward in my term, I want to be remembered as a role model. I want to be remembered as a role model for kids who feel like how I used to feel. Because I want to be a role model to the kids that don't fit in. I want to make sure that people realize that it is okay not to always color inside the lines. Rosa Parks, Martin Luther King, Greta Thunberg, and Malala. None of these people got famous by simply abiding by the standards that were set for them. No. They became well-known because they made sure people knew what they stood for. And now, it is my turn to show our nation's youth that we must stand together in the face of injustice and adversity and become the beacon of light and hope for those in need. Because I will not waste the platform that I have been given, because I want to create a more hopeful future for not only the youth of Natchitoches, but for the youth of our nation, so that we may stand together, indivisible, under this great nation, together, united through Beta, love, and compassion. Thank you all so much for allowing me the opportunity to be here, and God bless.
All right, Mason. Well, Mason, we weren't quite finished with you just yet. Some of you will come back to the microphone real quickly. How about that? Really great speech, right? I really loved the part about coloring outside of the lines and, you know, standing out, being uniquely who you are. And I think that really matters, and it resonates with a lot of youth who, you know, looking up to you, man. And you're a role model even now. And so we're really, we're honored, we're happy, we're proud, we're Natchitoches proud
that you're president.
Look, so I just want to know just a few things, and I'll let the council ask a couple of questions to have. Where are you going to college?
Um, my dream school is Notre Dame.
Okay.
I've been looking into their film program. I really want to major in film and either film or marketing. And it's really just been such a humongous interest of mine ever since I was younger. When I was younger, when I didn't have many friends, I turned to movies as sort of an outlet for a way to, like, just like get lost into an entirely different world. And so it's always been my dream to major in film, and Notre Dame has an outstanding program for it. So Notre Dame is my dream school, and UT Austin, Yale even, just like for fun, I'll apply there for fun.
Well, look, if none of those work out, I do know a particular school here. Okay, okay, look at you, look at you. All right. So what are you going to do as president, Mr. President?
Um, well, my main platform, my theme was McCart Has Heart, that was my campaign slogan. But my main theme is to spread compassion and love to all of the members and sort of renew a sense of passion for the club itself. Um, I know that a lot of people just do Beta Club to put it on their resume and just not really care about, just get some service hours, you know. But I want to make sure that everyone in Beta is actually involved and doing what they need to do in order to make Beta Club the best that it can be. So I want to ensure that everyone across the nation that is in Beta can truly feel like they have a platform to share their voice and to spread love and service and kindness to all the other people in their community.
Awesome. Look, I think we need, you know, compassion, passion, love in our country.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, you got any comments or questions for Mason?
I don't. Awesome speech.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
You say awesome.
Proud of you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Is Mr. Landry still involved with Beta?
Yes, he is. Yes, and I know he's very proud to have two national presidents back-to-back, so he's a great sponsor, he really is.
Yeah, I was in Beta back when I was in high school, I graduated in 2002, and I can't even fathom what you did and getting to that level.
It was very crazy.
Just from my experiences, that's incredible, that's such a huge accomplishment.
Yes, sir.
And wherever you go, don't forget us here in Natchitoches, because what you're saying, we need you here. So don't forget us, we need your wisdom, we need your words, we need your guidance and your work for the youth here.
Thank you so much.
So don't forget us wherever you go.
No, thank you so much, sir, thank you.
And I just want to add, spread that compassion wherever you go.
Thank you so much, really.
I just want to say congratulations, man, I just love your energy, man.
Oh, thank you.
You got me ready to jump up and run.
Oh, my gosh, thank you so much.
And I would say Mason was one of the, I think, 30-plus individuals we had on the mayor's youth council, so I really appreciate your contributions to the mayor's youth council. All right, Mason, we'll get a picture, and I got a little something for you.
Oh.
And I'd say I was on mayor's youth council too, so one day you could be.
And I just want to add to that, a couple of years ago, I was in the Beta Club.
Get one with John and Carmella.
Yeah. Parents.
Yeah, come up.
Come up.
Oh, they come with their parents.
Come up, parents.
Yes.
Hey, come on, brother.
Yeah.
Oh, hey.
Check.
Oh.
She's.
All right, yeah, we think it's really cool. Not only Louisiana, but back to back in Natchitoches, St. Mary's, awesome job. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is planning and zoning, uh, introduction, and that's Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero forty-eight of two thousand twenty-two, the ordinance admitting the ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand one, by changing the zone classification of the property described as fallen lot, ten people's division list, the west one-hundred-and-eleven point three feet as shown on plot and convened book, one-hundred-nineteen page, three fifty-eight, twelve-thirty Washington Street, whereas the planning commission of the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana, has recommended their meeting on August the second, two thousand twenty-two, that the application of Reginald Smith to rezone the property described as above from B three commercial to B three commercial with additional B eight zoning for all alcohol commission and premises be approved, and this is just for introduction.
Okay, um, for introduction, uh, Chantrelle, any comment? I know this is going through the planning and zoning process.
Right, so this is a, an already established restaurant at twelve-thirty Washington Street. Again, it's a crab in a bucket seafood, and they're wanting to be able to sell alcohol with consumption on premise.
Okay, all right, any, uh, none of the owners here tonight? Okay. I don't know if you would like to have a comment or something about this particular piece? Well, we'll get you, if you, yeah, yeah, come to the microphones, state your first and last name, and just, like we said, we know what it's about, change the zoning to allow for alcohol to happen.
My name is Reginald Smith Junior. I'm the manager. My daddy is Reginald Smith Senior. He the owner of Crabs in a Bucket. Um, we trying to get like the alcohol license because we sell seafood, and like a lot of people came in and asked about it, like older people, that was like, you know, they want to enjoy their seafood because we have fried seafood and bar seafood, so they want to enjoy their seafood with the alcohol like a dad grill or beer. So, you know, we already family friendly, so, and we open too late, so we just trying to get them.
You gotta compete.
Reginald Smith Junior. Smith Junior. Yes, ma'am.
Is it a year-round establishment, uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, council, you got any more questions, comments?
How long have you been open?
Gone on ten months.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we good, council?
Gotta get out there and try.
All right, this is just being introduced today, so it, there'll be a vote on the twenty-second of August.
Yes, sir.
Whether or not the council would approve, um, the sale of alcohol.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for being here, well spoken, sir.
Thank y'all.
All right, awesome job.
Looking forward to it, congratulations.
All right, again, that's open, uh, that's gonna be up for vote, uh, next city council meeting. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, I guess next movement is, I would like to ask for a motion to take, ordinance number forty-two from the table.
May I make a motion that we table ordinance number forty-two?
Uh, that we, uh, take it from the table?
Take it from the table.
Okay. All right, motion has been made and seconded. Uh, comments or questions, council? Remember, we had the table, and we were waiting on one more local bank to bid, and I think it's a great thing that we actually did wait, all right? Um, seeing that there any, any public comments or questions about this motion? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, it is taken from the table, and it's on Councilman Nielsen from here.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number forty-two of two thousand twenty-two, I'll read it in title only, um, third times the charm, uh, bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds series two thousand twenty-two of the city of Natchitoches, Paris of Natchitoches, state of Louisiana, prescribing the form, fixing the details, and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, awarding the sale of the bonds to the lender thereof, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And I move that we adopt ordinance number forty-two of two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Um, do have my attorney from Monroe. Are there any additional comments that you think the council needs to hear at this point?
Mr. John, Bill Bowles, Bowles, Shafter, Monroe, um, just want to point out that, uh, B O M Bank, uh, gave us, uh, an excellent rate considering the environment that we're dealing in when rates are going up. Uh, they gave us a, a, a four-point-five percent fixed rate of interest for twenty-five years, and that is very unusual. That was very, uh, that was, that was a, a very aggressive bid by B O M, and, um, and so that, that means which the debt service annually is, is, uh, is significantly lower than it would be, so we'll be able to have fixed payments, and, and, uh, I believe they'll be even, uh, less than what the park service is paying off. So it was a good deal, and so tonight you'll just be awarding those bonds to B O M.
Yep, I think as I say, and good things come to those who wait. So, um, it was, it was awesome, as you were explaining to me, Mr. Bowles, the deal. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bowles, council? All right, I believe that this is, what are we on for? Oh, this is final? Okay, this is final. All right, um, thank you, Mr. Bowles. Well, I guess before you take your seat, any public comments or questions for Mr. Bowles on this particular piece? All right, thank you again, sir, for working on this on this. I think this is the best possible outcome for the city, all right? All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is read by Councilman Harrington.
This is, um, ordinance forty-five of two thousand twenty-two, ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches to award the bid for West Natchitoches water main replacement phase one. This is bid number zero-six-four-eight. Um, this was previously introduced. The, uh, appointed committee members recommend the city award the bid to the lowest bidder to his pulley construction in the amount of six-hundred-sixty-nine thousand dollars. I move to adopt ordinance forty-five of two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Um, I think Matt gave is pretty much self-explanatory based on information we had, pulley construction. As Councilman Harrington noted, it's the lowest bid to do these water mains. So, council, I don't know if you have any additional questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, are there any public comments or questions about this particular ordinance? All right, we got a motion and a second. Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries also. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number forty-six of two thousand twenty-two, read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. The following ordinance was introduced in writing at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Natchitoches City Council on Monday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, ordinance number forty-six of two thousand twenty-two, and ordinance creating the Texas Street Economic Development District, state of Louisiana, and defining the boundaries thereof, appointing special counsel, and otherwise providing with respect thereto. And I move that we adopt ordinance number forty-six of two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
All right, motion, uh, made and seconded. We got Mrs. Busada already standing. Ask her, you will come to the microphone, I think you know how this works.
Absolutely. Well, as you know, this is the first step in creating.
I think he's forgotten how it works. Your first and last name.
I feel so at home.
That's right.
Mike Busada, Butler Snow.
All right, good to have you, Mike.
It's good to be here. So this is the first part of this process to, uh, for this development on Texas Street. This creates the district. What we'll be doing next is getting with the developers and going through, they continue to make significant progress in lining up different franchise agreements and getting different tenants in place. So we'll be meeting with them, coming up with what specifically, um, they're gonna need in terms of economic development financing, and then we'll come back to you to present that to you, um, for your approval, so whether that is, as we did last time, um, levying an additional tax, or whether that is, um, another combination of additional financing tools out there, we'll bring that back to you for your consideration, and, uh, we look forward to having another successful project.
All right, uh, we know that Mike has done this a couple times already, uh, in our city, they have gone through smoothly, the Hobby Lobby, E D D, also the River South Commons, E D D, where we're seeing, I think, significant progress being made currently. Um, so I don't know, council, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Just excited to get it up and running, moving forward. It's gonna be a good project.
And Mayor, I just want to add, um, I know we come to these meetings and, and the, and the mayor say what, um, Mike and what the attorneys are doing, but I think we also need to, uh, also recognize yourself. All these long meetings that you involved in, putting this, putting these teams together for this to take place, it's a lot of hard work, and the progress that's taking place. I need, you know, for my purposes, you know, good job, what you've been doing.
Thanks, sir, I appreciate that.
I'll second that.
And I third.
Any public comments for Mr. Busada? Public comments or questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Wilson. Yes, sir, we do need it. And state your first and last name, please.
James Wilson, um, so I guess my question, uh, was, when this is applied, would it be applied to existing businesses that are on Texas Street within the Special Economic Development District, or will it be applied only to new businesses to be remitted back to them, um, for property improvements, uh, similar to River South Commons?
It's gonna be similar to River South Commons in the fact that this district is just, um, encompassing land that's owned by the developers, and so this would just be, um, applicable to that land and those businesses that they're putting together for the development.
My understanding is that, uh, these, these additional tax monies are expire at the, uh, end of the term that it takes for the property improvements to be, uh, to be paid off. Um, at what point will, will these, uh, expire when they're enacted?
Right, tonight, the city's not committing to any specific amount of money or any, or providing any specific incentive, this just creates the district. Um, over the next several weeks, we'll be getting together, um, and looking at what they need specifically in order to make that project, um, economically viable, and that's what this is all about, you know, we don't want to, we only want to provide what's necessary to make this project an economic success, and so that's still being determined, and then we'll come back at another meeting, um, with that specifically for approval.
Okay, I think we got it. Another question back there, Mr. Busada?
My name is Frank Dennis. With our current economic situation with high inflation and going into a recession, it's a terrible time for government spending and higher taxes. You're just gonna run the economy down further. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other public comments or questions? What, I'm sorry, sir, she, she's trying to get your name. Yeah, you, yeah, yes, sir. How you say your last name? Okay? Are no additional public comments or questions? All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
Okay, um, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda, uh, is ordinance number forty-seven of two thousand twenty-two. It's Councilwoman Elarge Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-four-seven of two thousand twenty-two is an ordinance to deem property surplus and authorize the donation of surplus property owned by the city of Natchitoches and to other providers with respect thereto. This ordinance was introduced on July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and published in the Natchitoches Times in July twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two, and Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance number zero-four-seven, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion has been made and seconded. Um, any comments, council? I believe Matt explained last year, uh, not last year, last week, two weeks ago, um, if you remember that, um, so these are Christmas lights we won't use again. I think I mentioned that the mayor boys had approached me a number of occasions, um, you know, asking if we had any additional, uh, lights that we're not using anymore. So, uh, any comments or questions? Okay, any, uh, public comments or questions about this particular item? Okay, seeing none? Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries also. Next item on the agenda is resolution number sixty-eight of two thousand twenty-two, that's Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero-six-eight of two thousand twenty-two, a resolution designating Friday, September the second of two thousand twenty-two, as an official holiday for the employees of the city of Natchitoches for the year two thousand twenty-two, whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Natchitoches appreciate the hard work of the Natchitoches city employees, and whereas to show appreciation for the dedicated efforts of our city employees, the mayor and Natchitoches city council wish to declare Friday, September the second, two thousand twenty-two, as an official city holiday for two thousand twenty-two. Now therefore be resolved by Mayor Ronnie Williams Junior that Friday, September the second, two thousand twenty-two, be declared an official holiday for the city of Natchitoches employees. I so move that resolution number sixty-eight be adopted.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. This particular effort has been going on for some years. Um, I don't know who can trace it back.
I think it was Wayne, Wayne McCullin.
Under Mayor McCullin, okay? So to give that Friday before Labor Day, so essentially making it a four-day weekend. Um, so like I said, there's some, obviously some precedent for this. Uh, comments or questions, council, about this item?
I always felt like the employees all down this row work really, really hard, especially in the fall of the year, and this is a good way to extend the gratitude.
Appreciate your comments, councilman. Any public comments or questions about this particular resolution? All right, seeing none, I know we got a motion and a second. Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries also. Next item is resolution number sixty-nine of two thousand twenty-two, Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number sixty-nine is not on the computers, so I'm lucky I got a piece of paper. But I did print out the, so I'm gonna let it read the title, and I'm gonna give it to Mr. Ed Lee. So, resolution number sixty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise the bid for liquid chlorine for the water treatment plant, bid number zero-six-five-four, and I think this is going to go to either Matt or Mr. Ed Lee.
Let Ed, I'll let Matt, I'm sorry, say it first, and then if Ed wants to say anything about the bid process, you can.
Yeah, this is for our liquid chlorine that we use at the water plant to sanitize our drinking water.
Yep, okay, thank you, Ed. Well, thank you, Matt, for that, and then Ed said, look, I don't even say anything. Okey-dokey, all right, so this is chemicals that we need.
Can y'all let them know when the bid's gonna be out, because I didn't state that? Do you know that?
Yeah, we'll send it out tomorrow, once y'all, y'all have given us approval tonight, so I'll, the bid will go out tomorrow.
And it says on the document received until the September seventh, I think.
Okay.
Sounds right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Ed Lee.
Any questions, comments, council?
No, sir.
Um, do we know anything about the price? Not yet, not until we get the bid, right? That's the point of the bid.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, okay, all right, I'll take that question back. All right, any, any public comments or questions? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy.
Do we have a second?
I did second it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do second it.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, last item on the agenda, um, I'm sorry, who's reading it?
Harrington.
Oh, Councilman Harrington, go ahead, sir.
This is resolution number seventy of two thousand twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept and execute a grant agreement from the Federal Aviation Administration to seal coat RW, assuming that's runway, I'm not sure, seventeen thirty-five main apron and T W A and B phase-one design project at the Natchitoches Regional Airport. Um, I will refer to Ed for specifics.
Yeah, this is for the main runway, runway one-seven-three-five, and then taxiways A and B, and then the main apron. It's to seal coat, uh, the, these pavement areas to extend the life of it. Well, this, this is actually the design for the seal coat proj- project, and once this is done, this is about a sixty-eight thousand dollar grant, and once the study is done, the engineering is done, it will be followed up by another grant from the F A, FAA for the actual work. Right now, we estimate that to be about one-point-two million dollars, and this is one-hundred percent funded by the FAA and the L A D O T D. L A D O T D pays ten percent.
They pay what, what did you say?
The L A D O T D will pay ten percent, FAA will pay ninety percent, but it's a hundred percent to the city.
City has no, nothing to pay. I think you said this before.
Yeah, and the way all the grants work, is the city pays up front, and then they will turn around and reimburse the city.
Okay?
All right, I don't think I moved, I moved to adopt resolution seventy of two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
All right, any other questions? All right, any questions?
I have a question. What was the other grant used for? Was it for runway twenty-five?
The one that we are finishing up a project on right now is runway seven-two-five. Now, that was a complete mill and overlay on that project, much bigger project, and then to put in a new taxiway on the north end of the airport, and then to rehab taxiway B one on the east side of the airport. But we're about to finish that one up.
Those are also a hundred percent funded.
One hundred percent, yes.
Yeah. And I just want to say, what's impressive with our airport commission is how much work we get done to our airport that we don't have to pay for.
And we don't have big plans coming through.
Constantly, we're, we're getting these.
It's every year?
Constantly, we're, we're awarded these huge jobs that we don't pay for. That says a lot about our airport commission. I mean, it really does, it's really impressive.
I have one more question. The, the street that's going, coming into airport, is that road gonna be able to get fixed?
That's a low priority because it's not really aviation-related. The only time that we would get money for something like that is once everything else is in top-notch shape, then they would look at something like that, but that's not a priority to the FAA.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I'm just adding to Eddie's comment, um, because Eddie, you and I have spoken about it before, the engineers that we use out there, K S A, I believe.
That's correct.
As well, I think they do a pretty good job also, right?
That's correct. They have a whole division that deals with nothing but FAA and airport-related projects. And the engineer, his family is from Natchitoches, the Farmer family, some of y'all may know them, they were surveyors from Natchitoches, well, it's, Mr. Farmer's grandson is the engineer, and that's his specialty is airport work.
Okay, did we ask for public comments or questions?
No.
Public comments or questions on this particular item? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries also. Our next meeting is Monday, August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, um, and you'll see some information about, uh, Thursday, August eighteenth, at two thousand twenty-two here at City Council Chambers. We want to have a town hall, certainly don't want to keep anybody too long, but very important business, dealing with the city's water treatment plant. We want to pretty much keep it to, uh, to that particular topic, focus on our needs in water treatment, but particularly how we are able to meet that need and satisfy the need that we have. So, first one, Thurs- Thursday, August eighteenth, also want to look at another two, they're kind of T B A, but two in September, the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth, uh, in different parts, so they'll be outside of council chambers, uh, but, you know, I like using this because it allows us with the graphics and the techni- the technological enhancements to kind of show you some of the things that we would like for you to see in terms of that need. Also want to say, and I don't think we have the flyer inserted here, uh, that might be the last slide, right, Steve? Okay, um, August fifteenth, there is, uh, also here at the council chambers, something that we're calling, uh, USDA Roadshow, I believe, is that what it's called? So we're one of the few cities throughout Louisiana where USDA is, you know, their representatives are gonna come here to Natchitoches, and I guess more or less explaining some of their programs.
USDA and the Louisiana Housing Corporation.
Okay, so USDA and the Louisiana Housing Corporation are gonna be here.
The director of both of those entities will be coming to Natchitoches and bringing their team to talk about programs that are available to the residents and to help the community.
Yeah, that is, um, look, I need you to say that on the microphone real quick, okay? Yeah, what you just stated on the microphone, come on, that means get up and, and go over there, state your first and last name, because I think it's really important. So what we're gonna do, we're going to work with our local media to get the word out. Um, it's, you know, they put us, put us down to come, so just explain what's gonna happen next Monday.
Yes, the USDA and the Louisiana Housing Corporation has partnered to do a Louisiana Roadshow to share information about their programs. Uh, as executive director, Deidre Robert, uh, with the USDA, uh, will be coming, along with Josh Hollins, the executive director of the Louisiana Housing Corporation. That's on Monday, August fifteenth, at six P M, right here in council chambers.
Who are you, ma'am? State your first and last name.
Oh, my name is Nicole Gray.
Okay, that's right, we gotta do it. I know we're past the business part.
Monday, August fifteenth, at six P M.
And we just shared the fly, let me, Nicole, before you take your seat, I think some of you know, um, and Nicole, major part, probably most part in this, but, uh, and council certainly very important in terms of some votes, and some things we had to amend the agenda to make sure we got everything in, and so we appreciate your willingness to amend those, amend the agenda at those times, so we can make sure we, we get the grant. But four hundred thousand dollars for the Love Louisiana Doors Grant. To have to make improvements to the Richardson, Richardson Park.
Yes.
Um, and so we're excited. Could you just remind us of some of the improvements that are gonna be made, uh, at the park, just, you know, because of these funds that we have? We will match, you know, some things, but most of it is coming from the L C D B G program.
Yes, uh, we're gonna be making a number of improvements to Richardson Park, um, long time coming, obviously. Um, some of the blighted items will be removed from the park, um, and, um, a park area, uh, playground area that has, um, availability for residents of di- different abilities will be able to play at the park. Um, we're gonna be adding a walking trail, complete with L E D lighting and benches around the walking trail. Um, we're also gonna be remodeling the restrooms at the park. Um, we're gonna be adding parking spots because there's no parking at the park, and, um, I think that's everything. Did I miss anything? We're doing a lot with four hundred thousand dollars.
Doing a lot.
And in addition to that, um, the city.
Basketball court.
The city is adding a basketball court. That's not going to be with the L C D B G funds, that is going to be on the city, so in addition to everything that I just named, uh, the city will be throwing in a basketball park for the community, and I think it's gonna be great.
Yes.
Yes, an additional pavilion right at the front of the entrance. Thank you for reminding me. We've been working at this one for a while, so we were so excited to get the announcement last week that we, we want it.
Yep. All right, again, thank you for your work, certainly, council.
Thank you.